All right, good morning, everybody. We're back. And it's exciting to see Kevin back in the room and Karen. Hello, come on up.
You sure?
I love seeing your face.
What?
I love seeing your face.
Love seeing all of yours. How is everybody? Yeah, turn that around for me.
Really careful about this one.
Careful, these things can go flying around.
They can.
I've seen it.
Good morning, commissioners. It's great to be here with you this morning. So this will serve two purposes. One, this is our quarterly report to the commission. And then I do have an ask closer to the end of our discussion on behalf of the Economic Development District. We submitted our written report to you all last month, and so I don't want to necessarily go through that, but I just wanted to hit a couple of other highlights, maybe do a little bit of a look ahead until through the end of this year and into early next year. So first and foremost, our childcare coalition kicked off last month. We're super excited about that. We had great representation there, including public health. So Dave and his team were well represented there. And we had a lot of participation from the sheriff's office as well. So we're really appreciative of having the county's support in that work. Basically, it's a twofold process for us. We'll be doing a countywide needs assessment and then putting together a strategic plan to help address childcare shortages here. So we'll be doing some community survey work, site visits, just, you know, understanding what childcare providers need in order to grow here. One of the things that is really nice about our partnership with Mason Matters is certainly the EDC is good at the business development side of things. But Mason Matters is really good about bringing social service groups to the table and different groups that we might not work with as closely. And so it's a good partnership between us and them. And so we'll also be doing outreach to families because that's really, that's key as well. So it's twofold. What are the impacts and needs on childcare providers? What are the impacts and needs for families in Mason County? And so it's really, it's been an interesting process for us so far. And I think we're all pretty excited about what we're able to put together here. So we're pretty enthusiastic about that.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Are you including, so when you find things out, are you including the state, like our legislators?
Yeah.
In that information?
Yeah, for sure. So we have a monthly meeting with Commerce to report out on the work that we're doing. And then Representative Kotor will be joining our coalition meeting this month. And so, so of two purposes. One, he can tell everybody about the work that he's doing as it relates to childcare at the state level. But it's also a good opportunity for him to hear from childcare providers and families about what they're looking for in terms of accessibility, affordability, what the regulatory climate looks like, you know, what are the barriers to expansion here? So we're excited about having him join us. We're grateful. You know, it's a tough time of year. It's always a tough time of year for our legislators to be able to, you know, schedule things, but he's been gracious enough to give us some of his time this month. So yeah, definitely some reporting back and forth there.
That's fantastic.
We've also launched our weekly wrap-up emails. This is something that we do to highlight different things that are happening in the community, whether it's economic development or community service related. It's been, we're 12 weeks, I think, into that now, and we've seen good response to it. It's quick-hit type pieces where you're able to, you know, not, you know, you just look at the link, or we have a survey, like our childcare survey went out last week, different things like that. And so it's a great way for us to share funding opportunities, economic development news and things like that. And then we're also working on developing a podcast. And this is geared more towards telling stories in the community, talking about the work people are doing as it relates to economic development, what their industries are, you know, how are they addressing workforce shortages, how are they, you know, how are they growing in the community and different things like that? So we're pretty excited about that. I think we're planning to launch that in the new year. So Tiana's hard at work at getting those things scheduled. And again, just appreciate the partnership with Public Health and being able to use their recording studio and equipment and everything like that. So they have a pretty nice setup there, and so we're grateful to be able to partner with them on that. We're also, like everybody else, preparing for the 2026 legislative session. So we'll have our joint send-off meeting with the chambers and our legislators on December 1st. Still finalizing some of those details, so stay tuned for invites and all that kind of stuff as that comes together. And so we're also finalizing our agenda and just, you know, we're out trying to advocate for a fair regulatory environment for our business community. We want to make sure that we're not going backwards in terms of funding for economic development activities at the state level. And of course, one of the things that we want to position the organization to do is support community partners that are out asking for funding for their projects. And so as you think about what you all might be asking for, you know, just, you know, wanting to have that level of communication and want to make sure that we're advocating for good projects, of course. Being able to sit in on your meeting last week with Representatives Griffey and Kotor was really good. As you think about especially advocacy, continue to advocacy for the SR3 freight corridor. But as you also think about maybe, you know, an ask for support for funding for Mason Lake and things like that, I think us and the two chambers would be really interested in, you know, lending our support to those efforts as well. Workforce development, I know you had PAC Mountain in recently to provide some updates, as was mentioned at that meeting, I will be taking over as board president in January. So that's fun and exciting, excited to go on that journey. Not surprisingly, a ton of hands did not go up, but it was, we're excited to be, I think, playing a more active role now in PAC Mountain and being able to advocate for workforce development opportunities here. To that end, we're partnering again with PAC Mountain and now Maryam Knight School District on a youth employment roundtable out there, so we'll be doing that in December. Good opportunity to hear from students, you know, juniors and seniors who are starting to think about what they want to do after high school. And not everybody's going to go to a, you know, two or four-year college program. And so what are the, what do they want to see from our workforce development agency? And how can we support that? We're also working on developing a career pathway project with Maryam Knight. I really appreciate Matt Mallory and Garrett Chohannes, who's their CTE director there. And we've, of course, worked closely with Shelton High School's CTE program. But it's good to see Maryam Knight engaging with us on that work as well. And so more to come on that, but they're trying to be more proactive for their students out in Matlock and finding opportunities for them to, you know, find a career that works for them and hopefully keeps them relatively local and in our community as well. And then I was asked to participate in the Presidential Search Committee for Olympic College's new president. That's pretty exciting. As you might remember, I was also adjunct faculty at Olympic College. And, you know, I think our campus here is really kind of an untapped, you know, resource for the community. And it's sort of ebbed and flowed over the years in terms of what's been offered there and the resources that they put into it. And so from the EDC's perspective, we want to make sure that we're supporting that campus and that we are communicating that need to Olympic College in Bremerton. And so we don't want to be forgotten. We want to make sure that that campus is here and continues to grow. So I'm excited to represent our community on that committee and hopefully advocate for a new president that sees the value in our community and that campus. And then the last item that I have is related to our Economic Development District. So we recently hosted our Economic Development District Board for a tour at the Port of Shelton. So we had a great tour with Wendy Smith, the director there, and had transportation provided by Mason Transit. So thank you, Mason Transit, for shuttling us around to their different sites. But it was a good opportunity for us to highlight the Port of Shelton and some of the opportunities that exist there, but also take a look at the good work that they're currently doing. And we were also treated to a really great tour at Lynch Creek Farms, which they're starting to ramp up for the holiday season. And it's just such an impressive business in our community and a great tenant at the port. You know, they have products there that, you know, they're grown locally and regionally. They're put together locally and shipped across the United States. And so there's not a state in the country that doesn't have a Lynch Creek product at their home or business during the holiday season. And that's a, that's a pretty cool thing for our community. So Andy Hunter was gracious enough to take us around and show us his operation. And I think the folks on the board that participated in that walked away with a lot of optimism and enthusiasm for what is happening in Mason County. And so it's always good to be able to highlight those things here and to be able to show that, you know, they might be a little bit off the highway frontage and you might not know what's going on in these, you know, sort of nondescript, you know, buildings out there. But they're really an important economic driver for us. And so we're grateful for the host, the tour being hosted by the port, Andy Hunter and Mason Transit. So the one ask that I do have of you that I think was included in your packet. A couple of years ago, the commission adopted a resolution that helped form the Economic Development District. As we've gotten that board up and running and we're going through the Federal Economic Development Administration process to get that all finalized, we want to make a name change to the organization to better reflect the region and to highlight, you know, the partnership there. And so we were initially called the Pacific Salish Economic Development District. We're asking for support from the commission to approve a name change to the Evergreen Coast Regional Partnership. And so these will get circulated through the four counties in the Economic Development District. And then they'll get attached to our application. And hopefully, the government opens at some point here soon and that'll get approved and we'll be well on our way. Annette Roth from the Economic Development District is on the call there. And say hello, Annette.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me.
So she would be able to answer all the difficult questions you have related to the process. But for today, we're just asking for approval on the name change.
It's mainly to reflect the potential addition of Lewis County. Lewis County is landlocked, so being part of the Salish Sea or, you know, they're not really attached to that and potentially be adding Lewis County into the mix. So that's the main reason for the name change.
They're the Evergreen. Part of the Evergreen, so, yeah.
Yeah, I've never been a fan of the old me, so I like this new little lot. I think this better suits who we all are instead of just certain demographics and certain factions of people. I also wanted to point out, I'm not, never a big fan of government intrusion to the certain things, but when it comes to childcare, I know that we balance, we balance that off. But I do know for economic development, I can't think of a stronger tool for bringing businesses or bringing employees, if you could pull something like that off. And I would be open, I don't know where we'd have the dollars, but there's, I'd be open if you were looking at putting together a project specifically for Mason County on how it would work. I would be open to look at those for any opportunity you want to bring.
Glad you say that, because I do have some ideas.
I thought you might.
Yes.
And I know where to find the money.
This might be the biggest thing you could bring in for bringing in businesses and stuff, so.
It's a huge barrier.
Yes, it is.
The lack of affordable childcare is a bigger barrier. The first coalition meeting that we had was an eye-opener for me, talking with all of the providers and the resources that were there, the difficulties that households face. So I'm excited about this project.
And the waiting lists are huge.
Yes.
It's unfathomable how short we are. And it's not, it's not a political thing. Life changes and people have to work now. They didn't always have to. And what is the other option? I wish it was as easy as having grandma take care, but it doesn't work that way anymore either.
Grandma's got to work it.
That's right. So with that, these are our only options. Just make sure if you can that they're in non-political just to get them. But I think it's a great step for the EDC. I hope you are successful.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. And I, I think there's such an incredible need for it at this point in time. You know, the last time there was any kind of data collected or a survey done was a few years ago. And, and, you know, that, over that period of time, we've actually gone backwards on available childcare slots in the community. And so there's definitely a need for it. We're hearing it from a lot of county workers, especially county workers that work non-traditional hours, people that work, you know, at the hospital or in the PUDs that have, you know, shift work and things like that. But even, even for families that need crisis care, you know, that maybe don't need it all the time, but, you know, have an emergency come up where they need it. Or if there's a CPS investigation, they don't have many places to place children, you know, sort of short notice. And so as we start to dive into this, I think we're going to learn a lot about some of those gaps and just be able to put together, I think, a strategy that'll identify different funding sources and different, honestly, different partners too, who can come together and, you know, do projects that benefit the community. So we're, we're really excited. It'll be, I think, a really informative and honestly, I think a really rewarding next seven months on this project for us.
That's exciting. Yeah. Did you add Kim to the invite?
I didn't. I have to talk to her because I, yeah, I have a couple of things that I want to catch up with her on, and that's one of them. Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
She'd be a great addition.
Agree, yeah. Definitely have some good HR professionals in the groups that, you know, as they're thinking about recruitment and retention, how important this is. And, you know, we have a mix of providers and employers, public sector, private sector. So I think, I think we'll have a really well-rounded group and a, you know, I think a really well-rounded strategy too. It won't be, won't be hyper-focused on one, one particular group or entity's perspective, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Very cool. And I love the name change.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Support that 100%.
Excellent. Yeah, Annette's done a lot of really great work with, you know, coming up with branding associated with it and a website associated with the partnership. And just does a really good job, I think, of highlighting the current partners. And as Commissioner Torreswell said, it does leave room for us to bring Lewis into it. I think when we were going through this process a few years ago, we were operating under the assumption that Lewis was already a part of a different Economic Development District. And you can only be, you can only be in one and you have to be in, with at least two counties. And so it, at the time, I think those, you know, communications were maybe crossed up a little bit. They weren't in one or had recently left one, and so they're kind of a free agent now. And so I think they're interested in joining us, which makes a lot of sense because we work, of course, with them on a number of things, including PAC Mountain. Are they part of Orca, Commissioner? Are they in our Orca region? Okay. But it's just in general, we.
Area agents, family agents, like that.
Yep.
There's, they're a part of, of most of the committees that I'm on anyway.
Yeah, so it makes sense. It's just, I think the plan would be to go through the process of getting the, as it is, you know, just get that established at the federal level. And then there's a process that we can, we can bring them into the group after that designation is secured. So more to come on that, but for today, just the name change.
I like it.
Yeah.
Sounds like it's a go, yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah. And then you mentioned the legislative send-off. December 1st is when we do our budget.
Okay.
Just a heads up.
Yep, perfect. So, yeah, this is usually like a 7:30 thing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's always good to eat.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
You don't want to do budget on an empty stomach every month.
Nobody wants us to be.
Might lose your appetite after a while.
I buy a lot less when I go shopping on a full stomach.
That's true. So, yeah, and if anything comes up, you know, don't hesitate to reach out. But yeah, thanks for your time this morning.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to get on your calendar, if I could, to have a meeting with you related to small business here in Orca.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, Kel, you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Have a nice weekend?
I did. I enjoyed walking my dog in the early light this morning.
That was not dark.
Yeah.
Yeah, I still won't go early.
Okay, we have three openings on our Planning Advisory Commission. We've received one application so far. I thought there was two, but I just saw the one. So just asking to, you know, get Kami to set those appointments up.
You know this person from LTAC, right?
Cynthia Sund?
Yeah, I thought she said she was LTAC.
No, she was on other committees. She was on, let me look real quick.
She was on LTAC, but.
Must have been.
But I don't know how long ago it was.
Yeah. That's Cynthia Sund.
Original, original LTAC. Let's just interview her. I was just thinking if she was already on one of our committees and.
She's got an impressive resume.
Yeah, just a little for being a local.
Yeah, it's awesome. Yep, good to go, Kami.
Okay, and then we did get the, just as a follow-up from the special meeting that the Planning Advisory Commission held with, with the board, we did schedule a work session Monday, the 10th, in the afternoon for a couple hours for your first, I guess, kind of meeting regarding the comprehensive plan. So we sent out the draft this Wednesday at our noon deadline. We will have, like, whatever the updated version is. So you'll see, you know, you've got access to what was set, but it'll be updated since then. And, yeah, and then from there, we hope to then schedule. I know you've got a tight schedule between here and the end of the year, just given the holidays and stuff. So we'll look at when we'll want to do the public hearing. And then if any one of the three of you or all three of you want to have individual meetings with Marissa and/or myself, we can accommodate that.
I just want to make sure we go down that list of stuff and that we had met with them and get those things off the, off our list if we can.
Okay.
To go along with it.
Yeah.
I know I had talked to Jeff, you talked to Jeff, and you smoothed out a lot of different stuff, and I appreciate that. Just see if we can't get it all done and simple. But just remember, don't pressure yourself too much on the date. I know they have it. But if nothing happens, nothing happens on that.
Yeah, and so I can, I know Loretta's out this week. But we can follow up with Loretta on what information. I know her and our team were working on getting additional stuff. And I don't know that that happened on time for the update. So, but we'll just keep working on that until you guys finalize it.
I think it's more for the end of the product anyway, all the stuff that they're looking for. That's what I took out of the meeting with them is, it wasn't that they wanted to say before we can never talk again. They just wanted to have some of that stuff before it was voted on. That's what I took. The pack.
You lost me.
The pack, they had a list of different stuff for us to incorporate into it, stuff like that, yeah.
It wasn't the entire pack, it was just?
They had some of the same concerns. They just.
The other?
Yeah, they had some of the same concerns. They didn't understand some of the concerns until he said them. Apparently, there was a disconnect on what's, how it gets communicated to each other, how they, they didn't know. One of them was explaining to me that he just, he knew there was problems, but he didn't know what they were. And it was nice to actually hear them spelled out, so.
Sounds good. Looking forward to our draft.
Okay. And then I think next up is Luke. He's on dilemma today, so he's sticking over in the office.
Good morning, commissioners. I have an item to brief from the Historic Preservation Commission. So the commission is asking the four county commissioners to review the application for Caleb Coles to serve on the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission and reappoint him to the commission if you desire. He's been on the commission for about three years now. I don't know the exact date. But Caleb has been a really valuable member of the Historic Preservation Commission through growing up in Mason County, his past experience as a surveyor and general history buff, and his current experience working in the assessors office. Just been a really, really valuable perspective on the commission. We've currently got one position that's expiring this coming November 30th, two vacant seats that expire that aren't currently filled, also on November 30th, and then one vacant seat that expires next year. So we've got three openings, and then Caleb is reapplying. We've had two other applicants submit, and I would be probably briefing you on those next week or in the coming weeks.
Well, I'd be, I would support going, moving ahead with reappointing Caleb.
Agreed.
And then if you've got new appointments or new folks, that'd be great.
All right, that's all for me. Thank you very much.
You got three.
Okay, I think that's it.
Anything else? Your face, your face was like, oh no, vanilla.
It's almost the end of the year. It's happening fast.
It is, it is. All right. Anything for Kel?
No.
Did the sheriff sub next?
Yes. You know, are they out in the lobby?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
He has to keep talking so he can't sit in here.
Right?
That's why that works.
Yeah, I like that. Give me that.
Sheriff talks.
Wow, you know, we're waiting.
I'm sorry.
Come on.
Too noisy out there.
You guys are. I must still say you guys are loud.
Because you can't hear.
What?
Yeah.
How are you? Hey. How are you?
We're gonna have to.
I know, yeah. Kevin's the one person out.
All right, Sheriff.
First off, I want to update you guys so you don't hear it somewhere else, but our lieutenant.
I hate when you start that finally.
Our lieutenant, Trevor Severance, fell off a roof last night. He was in Harborview with some pretty severe injuries, so.
Can you keep us updated, please?
Yeah, absolutely. We were going to try to go up there. Myself and the chaplain today, but they probably won't let us in to see him because he's in the intensive ICU. So we'll keep you updated on that, but that was kind of a scary thing. He's fortunate to be with us still, sounds like.
It's a good thing his wife loves him.
Very much so, very much so. All right, the first thing we're gonna brief on is, do you have, did you bring the pictures?
I did.
Yeah, I want to see it.
So having these some conceptual.
Just so you guys know, we had somebody from our breakfast who happens to know Bruce Titus. Reach out to Bruce Titus and let him know what we're doing with the DARE program and ask if he would be interested in donating to the program. He and his crew donated, what was it, $43,000? A 2024 Mustang GT. We've got, Matt has worked hard. He's got Les Schwab going to donate suspension, tires and wheels. He's got Citizen for Public Safety that does our upfitting, going to donate a wrap and all the lights. And he's got some concepts going of what it's going to look like. We've already taken delivery. We didn't even pay tax or licensing on the vehicle. So that's going to be a part of our fleet now. And that was a pretty exciting thing to start bringing this back. And of course, it's going to draw the kids to the program. This will be in parades and car shows and everything else to draw attention. And Matt is now the state coordinator for Washington State DARE. So, and there's 14 agencies now that are doing DARE or are certified to train.
We just got, I think Spokane County just got one, so I think we're about 16 now, so.
Wow.
We're growing, which is great.
That's cool.
And it's something that the sheriffs have grabbed onto across the state because we really want to reach the kids. And then again, in fifth grade, our goal is to, at some point, hopefully, get DARE in every one of our fifth grade classes in Mason County. And every one of our superintendents are very excited to have it and they really want it. It's been rebranded. It is no longer just drug awareness resistance. It's a decision-making model that teaches the kids how to navigate life. And it's, it's a pretty, pretty impactful lesson, and Matt does a great job with it.
It gives an opportunity for them to have a relationship with an individual.
Yes.
Which is the most valuable, I think.
Absolutely. Matt, did you want to add anything? I kind of stole all your.
No, you did a great job. It's just, it's, it's no longer, you know, when people talk about DARE, you know, there's kind of this, you know, image of the Nancy Reagan era, just say no to drugs. Kind of the, you know, kind of harsh, just say no. Now we've kind of changed that model up and giving kids a fighting chance with, you know, critical thinking skills rather than just saying no and walking away. And so, yeah, it's actually rebranded back by science, and it's, it's working. It's doing a great job. So it's, and it's, and it's fun to do. It really is.
My kids were doing it. It was a tutorial on what drugs to try.
Yeah. Goodness gracious.
It's not good. Oh, there's another one we can try.
I don't know. I'll miss McGruff.
Well, they cover everything from suicide to, you know, bullying to, only one of the 10 weeks is actually on drugs.
Yeah, so one, so it's not hyper-focused on just a drug, you know, what that is. But we talk about awareness and effects of, and it's just based on those critical decision-making models to, you know, make healthy choices in everything that we do. I mean, we can all probably take something away from DARE. What's great about it is, you know, there's, it's all hands-on. So we, I teach it. They hear me talk for a while. We teach it on a screen, so we get all the learning abilities. And then we also, you know, we do hands-on lessons as well. And then there's stuff that they bring home. And so I usually put out a newsletter, like, about my parents, and so get that parent involvement. So we're starting to eventually change that culture within the. Eventually change that culture within their family environment too, so.
But just so you know, we did not purchase this with county funds. Fully donated everything, and we were going to obviously put on the wrap all those sponsors and donate it, it'll say donated by.
It'll say, how can we recognize that, cause that's a heck of a.
We also wanna do another unveiling, so to speak, when it's all done and recognize all of the donors, including our community credit union that has already donated money. To the program and others, and it's gonna impact our community kids.
And so you're working with Kelly and Jen and others on the fleet?
Well, that's where this kinda comes in, when I talked to Jen, she said we should do a resolution or have us accept a resolution for the donation of the car. So there's an attached resolution in, in your package there that, uh, they're asking you to sign off on and go from there.
Okay.
Sound about right?
I agree with that.
Okay, well, I can run in with the second part of this, um, since I kinda ran the PLRs and the budget processor later. In the last, uh, meeting that we had a month ago-ish or so, you guys had asked us to come back with a couple of things to, to clean up on. Is Kelly here? Brian's a Kelly. You're supposed to be here, um, anyway, starting number one, uh, we talked about the deputies position and trying to act. Maybe use opioid settlement funds to create that position and to fund that position. Um, and we would do a Dare position out of it, and that would allow Matt to do full-time along with some part-time folks in our, uh. From our patrol fleet to do some more instructive to some of the other schools. We set this up in a, I think you asked for like three years, hundred and fifty a year should get us through, we've already got a car covered on it. I just don't know what the process is, we've talked to Dave. And.
We had a workshop on the temp for the opioid funding, because we have a number of folks that are looking to.
Yeah.
To touch that fund.
And I know for myself on that one, um, I think I'm comfortable even making sure I'm committed there on this one as a, as a stance now. Regardless, but we probably can't do it until the temp tell you this is that, but I'm not, I, I don't waver on this one at all, I think this is one of the no-brainer ones, the hanging fruit, so we can do something with. That's my personal commitment, that's all I can do until we have it before us, uh.
I'm, I'm still waiting for the end of our, all the presentations before I'll commit to anything.
Well, I just wanna clean up our presentations then, um, there's information on here about what we're expecting to get out of this program. If you have any questions about it, uh, we can dig further and deeper with Matt here as to his ideas.
Does anybody need a copy of it, or you all have it in the briefing?
I just wanna clarify something, though, we're talking about the opioid funds, not the general fund, and, uh, a special, special fund a lot, but though, right?
Well, yeah, it's opioid fund, so there's.
But it's not general.
Not general.
Well, unless we decide to do something else with the opioid, so it's, to me, it's, it's not a. I, I still have to, I, I, I'm still working that in my brain, my little block.
Either way, we want a full-time deputy, we understand you guys are in a difficult position, this was an option to pay for that. Uh, the next section, I believe, was on training, you'd asked us to clean up the training and come up with some priorities, I had Chief Rhodes go through this, he would be here, but he's, uh. Getting all of his wisdom teeth pulled, um. It's a joke. So, uh, you can see where we've got a group of priorities here, we, we labeled them off, about thirty-five, thirty-four thousand dollars is the. Cost for the highest priority training, uh, programs that we need, what they are and the justications behind them, and then we drop in, uh, uh. A second priority being twenty-six thousand, and then a third priority being about seventeen thousand. Um, we ask that you fund that full section on the priority one.
May I for a second? Did you, uh, check all those against, uh, current?
I'm sorry.
About their request, did we check them against the current, uh, funding and make sure we have no duplicate, uh, that it's actually, uh. An extension of more funding?
I don't think she's seen this much of a detail to it, so we would have to sit down and talk with her and walk through it.
Then please feel, she can get that, that's alright, then she can get that back to us later, cause that's a question, you definitely need to make sure and find out. You know, it's priority, but it's already partially covered on this, and it's at number twelve, is that twenty-four?
Okay. How do you want to proceed with that, work with her and have her come up with the number?
Yeah.
Counsel?
Sorry, I was still looking.
Okay.
I, I, I would think, and then she'll tell us what part is over and above, but to be considered maintenance, cause if it's already maintenance, then there's no. No reason to talk about it, so if she's got it already set aside to maintenance.
To best my knowledge, none of it is maintenance as we've gone through this.
And this would all be, this was.
It hasn't been maintenance, it should, the priority one should be maintenance, cause it's stuff that we have to do.
But she may have some of the dollars already allocated in another spot, I got that for now.
That's what I'm talking about, so we find that out, the numbers change and they go down, it makes it easier to.
And then the last one was the, uh, expansion on the evidence building. Commissioner, you'd brought up that you'd like to see it broken down into two years. Uh, when I started talking to Kelly about this, I'm scratching my head going, I've never done anything like this, I can foresee this thing being a three or four-year project and, um, talking with Kelly. We would like to get the first year where we can, uh, do some dirtwork, get some fencing in, and then do some larger-scale planning with a architect and stuff.
Yep.
I was hoping Kelly was gonna be here, cause we'd been talking a number between a hundred and a hundred five, a hundred and fifty thousand.
He's online.
He's online there, I don't know if he's listening, though.
Kelly, are you listening? Push the little button, Kelly.
So, uh, and they, these are out-of-rent funds, not out of general fund, uh, and I appreciate that you guys have gone back to do that, so it'd be this much over a period of time. Uh, when the time comes, I don't know that we're ready to do that, but I, I could see it, and I don't think it'd affect our general fund, I'd be supportive of the refunds going in that direction.
It's gonna make a big impact, I know that you guys, I, I don't know if you've been updated, I think we updated you on how many firearms we're ended up storing now with the new laws. We have outgrown our evidence facility, uh, it's just ridiculous over there how much we have to store at this point. And this has been a long-term thing, we've known it's coming, uh, so this is very timely for us to get more space to be able to move that evidence room.
And you were here the last time, what we had talked about was moving in stages, you can go to that to a shell, move some of the things that could be handled in the shell and stuff like that, and.
Yes.
That's all I've got.
How's it seem? I have one for you.
Oh.
Um, so I was trying to figure out who went and picked up the tires on Cole and found out that it was you guys.
Yes.
So thank you so very much for stepping up and, and doing that service, it, it was, uh. I don't think she knows yet either, so I was just gonna either give her a call or, or have staff call her, but to let her know that it was you guys.
Yeah, I think there's over a hundred tires, our jail led a crew and picked them up.
Yeah.
Took them two trips, cause they filled the trailer completely.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it looks amazing there, and nobody else, nobody, and people, other people were starting to dump stuff there too, so.
It draws.
Right, it does, so, thank you guys so much.
That was the under sheriff, uh, putting that out at our staff meeting and the JFC jumped on it immediately.
Yeah.
Or the lieutenant, the new lieutenant.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Anything for the sheriffs?
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, please.
Yeah, and we will, uh, include you guys with the, uh, when we do the unveiling of the vehicle at some point, or at least put an invitation out because. We have so many community partners that are getting.
You know what, might be fun to have Matt do the presentation, a similar presentation to what we had at the sheriff's breakfast.
Oh, yeah.
Cause that was, that was awesome, because it gave to me a bit, a better idea of what was going on with the, with the Dare program.
Sure, for the.
For the commissioners as a whole?
Yeah.
Just so that you know what the new Dare program looks like?
Right, cause I saw it and I thought it was very.
I've already seen parts of it too at the, at breakfast, but also sitting down with him, so, but if you want it for the public.
Oh, that's, that's up to you guys.
It's up to, it's up to you as well, so.
Alright, you're talking about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, let's public out. I know. You look nice and warm, I love it.
I usually don't wear turtlenecks, cause it's too hot inside.
Our buildings are kinda weird.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, it's sixty-three degrees coming out of the vent, I first got there this morning, and then it was a hundred and three coming out of the vent just a little bit ago, so. Okay, so we're starting off with Marissa.
Okay, um, first item I have is overnight single adult emergency shelter. Um, so last month, uh, we opened, or I guess, yes, it's November, last month, uh, we opened an RFP, a request for proposals for. Uh, single adult overnight emergency shelter, up to thirty-five beds with the ability to scale up in the event of severe weather. We received one application, um, from a newer agency called Shelter Works. Um, the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board reviewed this at a special meeting.
Shelter or shelter?
Shelter, Shelter Works. Um, they reviewed the board, the advisory board reviewed the application last week and would like to make the recommendation of the Board of County Commissioners. To move forward with the proposal, um, so to be clear, what I have here is not a contract, it's just kind of information only. Um, I have some of the details of the proposal that we can go over together, but, um, really just permission for staff to meet with the agency and go over the details of it. To develop a contract, um, again, because they are newer, uh, we did receive a list of all of their, um, current or their new board members. I don't recognize any of the names, we have not con, the county has not contracted directly with anybody who's associated with this new agency. So I can't speak at this time to what their performance would be, if there's any concerns with their performance. Um, I did look into a couple of other things, such as a conditional use permit for community lifelines of building. Um, because this agency is going to partner with Community Lifeline to rent it for the period of four months to provide the overnight shelter, so. I don't know if the conditional use permit, I'm assuming, from what I've read so far, it sounds like it's attached to the building. Um, and not to an entity, so it's not attached to Community Lifeline, uh, but I, I'm not an expert, I need to do some research, more research on that.
So I've been looking in the back, and, and Eric's back there and he's nodding, so.
Yeah, it is, the, the use permit does follow the building.
Okay.
It's probably the only location that would work this winter, um, for a shelter, because it's already got the use permit, any, any other agency, a third company would probably have to. Apply for a use permit and go through sprinklers and the whole works health department and everything, it probably would happen before, when it was over, so. Now next year, the difference story, but this year, not in time.
It'd be the same in the county, and the difference would be a change of use permit, but it's not a change of use, it's the same use, so it would stay with the. The zoning and the building and stuff like that, uh, the only thing that I know, cause I. We have monies, how much monies do we already have, cause we're supposed, I've, I've gotten phone calls too and stuff like that, but at the same time, this is our job. Whether some people like it, I appreciate it, they have issue with it, that our job, though, is to make sure that we provide services that we're paid to provide sometimes. Uh, do we know how much money we have in this account for this?
For the RFP, re-release of a hundred and forty-nine thousand and I think seven hundred and forty-four dollars. The proposal did come in, if you calculate, they provided a monthly expense, um, it comes out a little bit over that at a hundred and fifty-four thousand twenty-five. They did state in their application that they intend to braid other funds, but they didn't provide the details of that, so we don't really know. How much they have available to provide the service, the advisory board did discuss this and agreed that it's a small enough amount, which we do have in reserve, I think. At the top of my head, I wanna say it's about two fifty to three hundred thousand in reserve, we purposely kept that reserve because. We just received twenty percent less funding this year for homeless response system, rental assistance was a lot less than we've had in the past, and we're, we're. Charged by Commerce to maintain services, so we wanna make sure we have backup, um, it, when it's needed. But there is additional dollars to cover that, I think the difference is about four thousand.
Yes.
Two hundred and.
Yes, yeah.
So the weight will be carried in the city no matter what, so my only provision is, is that we get buy-in from the city. If the city's bought in, I think it's our job to provide these services, uh, regardless of personal opinions as well.
The city was, is part of that.
We can't make any decisions on that building, that building is already approved for the, for the zoning, it's already got the motionless permit, if we try to. Stop it or, or change it, we could get sued.
Right, I think we're talking about the service.
Yeah, and I, and I don't disagree with you, but we need to have the city, not, not one, we need them to just to tell us they don't have an issue, that's all.
Okay.
Well, that was just my opinion, I, the other ones haven't said anything yet, is that so?
Well, I already did, in the.
Oh, that's on your party, sorry.
And the city is part of that committee, that's what I was trying to say.
So.
Correct, this is a number to vote to move that forward to you guys, yes. Which wasn't me.
Right. Any other questions? No, I think, well, it's, it's a service that we have to provide, and so I support moving forward.
So I will come back probably, hopefully next week, if not the week after, with a contract for the board's review and approval. Okay, we will reach out, um, and start working with the provider on a contract.
There's, might be fun to meet them.
Would you like me to invite them to do a?
Maybe, I, I would be interested to know how, I mean, they don't want to do a presentation or anything like that, but I've, I've never heard of them before. And so it might be fun just to, as a.
Put faces to names.
Yeah, yeah.
You know Sam Loomis, he's partnering with this group.
Sure.
He's been a part of multiple non-drops over the years.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be fun, kinda fun to, to meet them, see what their goals are too, you know, how do they plan to move forward?
We can do that.
We get, just before we expend money or, or sign the paper to expend money, make sure it's cleared.
Will do, no, I have a lot of follow-up questions, so, okay, we will start working on that, anything else on that item? Okay, um, the next item I have is, uh, the local homeless housing plan, the five-year plan, so. Um, you may recall that earlier this summer, the county contracted with two facilitators to develop our plan, I think they've done a wonderful job. Um, really engaging stakeholders, they did a, a three-day, or like two and a half day summit. A lot of one-on-one meetings and community surveys to develop the plan, I think that's really important, because this is community-driven. And I think our local providers are really gonna be taking ownership of a lot of the things that are in that plan. Uh, but the fl, the plan is finally in kind of a draft form, and I have to apologize because, um, I think I should have started this process a little bit sooner. I called Kami last week, thank you for your help with it, um, we are required by Commerce to do a public hearing, and, um. So I requested a date for that, but the only concern I have is that there are no action agendas until the twenty-fifth, so, um.
With the deadline.
Uh, what we, the plan is due to Commerce in the month of December.
Right.
So.
And we have a time on the ninth of December we can get a hearing in, right?
Right, but I know that we have to, it has to be approved, a public hearing has to be approved on an action agenda.
Ju- just to, to put one on?
Yes.
Uh, to do a public hearing, we need two weeks' notice, uh.
Right.
It wouldn't be the first time that it happened here, first of all, uh, in, in a briefing, just to allow it to go out for.
Okay.
Just as long as it's advertised.
The notice.
For two weeks, yeah.
So it wouldn't be the first time, it's not normal, but, uh.
When we get to the end of the year, it's always difficult.
When things are important, we have, we have to work within the stuff we have, and I would be, if you're telling me that it's necessary, then I would be supportive of that. Other than that, I'm not, cause I like, I think we're supposed to go through the process.
Right, I learned what the process is, um, so the, the request here would be for approval to do the public hearing on December ninth. I think the calendar was open for that day, and then what I'm hearing is that if the board approves today, we could release it today.
That's what, again, only, I wanna be careful, it's only in the rarest times, but, uh, I would not object to that if.
Yeah.
We wanted to, to advertise, the only thing we're doing is okaying it to advertise it.
The hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It looks like you've got three head nods.
And advertising it means scheduling it.
Right.
Correct. Okay, okay, I appreciate the flexibility there, I panicked a little bit, cause of all the holidays. Okay, um, I think it is important to get public input on the plans. Okay, um, I think it is important to get public input on the plan, so I appreciate that. I don't have, that was, those are the only two items I have.
Okay, Ian.
My commissioners, um, this is an item, just give you guys a heads up, um, cause I know it's, you know, higher on your radar, code enforcement issues. Uh, we do have some impacts that are currently happening to our solid waste code enforcement program, as well as future impacts that are coming up soon. Uh, one is our funding that we get from Ecology is no longer sufficient to, um, support what we were calling three quarters of an FTE, it now only covers about a half FTE. Uh, and that's for a lot of reasons, one is that funding sources stayed pretty stable, not increasing at all over the years that we've been receiving it. Uh, also, we used to get money at the end of the year from Ecology that was funds that were unspent by other jurisdictions, and we did not receive that last year, we don't expect to receive that, uh, this coming year. Uh, there's just not a lot to go around. And, uh, in addition to that, the full-time solid waste code enforcement staffer that I have will be going on extended leave, uh, probably somewhere in January. Uh, so that could be, uh, that, that's gonna have a, a major impact on our code enforcement program. Um, both our current response times as well as follow-up response times, so just wanted to keep you apprised of the situation.
Do you see any other pockets in there that you could utilize any of those funds for something temporary? Uh, anything with, uh, click-out court and council for pick, uh, anything you can think of, uh?
Well, the, the staffer will be doing pick work, um, they will be working in our water boy program, because that's where we have our, our funding, but it can't be used for solid waste code enforcement, unfortunately.
Well, just keep your eyes open, see if we can, so, I think it's important to all of us that are here at this table, uh, just trying to find out how to do it, especially in a rough year.
And a lot of that was funded by FPHS, right?
Yeah, yeah, one FTE is FPHS and then the half now is Ecology.
Kami, do you need the remote? That's okay. Thank you. Well.
That's all, no ask.
No, I appreciate the heads up and what you're doing, I think you guys are, you guys have done more than, than what people say, so. Appreciate it.
Okay, for me, um, got contracts in Thursday night, yeah, Thursday night, they reflect the current state of the federal funding. So maternal child health grant, which we had sixty-seven thousand, is gone, it's been wiped. Um, and that's been replaced with fifty-three hundred twenty dollars.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, that's right.
What?
To get, to get us through from now until January, which is not enough, uh, but we, we've got some funds we can carry. As for the maternal child health, um, children with disabilities, that, that piece of the, of the, the work. So that's gonna go forward until the first of the year, hopefully the, the feds will have things, um, changed out by then.
Is that funding a person or a service?
It's fu- it's funding half a person. So maternal child health block grant, I helped set up back in two thousand ten. And we, we funded it so that every county would have enough money, sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, then that would pay for a nurse. Well, that paid for a nurse fifteen years ago, does not pay for a nurse now. So, um, uh, now with all, all the, it's about half. And now with it going away completely, uh, that, that fifty-three hundred dollars will be enough to get us started and then we're working with DOH to see if we get some more funds from DOH, but I mean, everybody else is scrambling for funds from DOH as well, and I think DOH has laid off two hundred people, so. Um, Pierce County laid off twenty last week, uh, we're doing good and then we haven't had to lay off anybody. But, um, that comes from not, you know, up-staffing so much during COVID that, uh, when the funds went away, there was having to lay off, so we didn't, we didn't have that problem. Like I said, the, the contracts are in, we got another two hundred thousand for the FIG grant, which is Public Health Infrastructure Grant, which is paying for two positions. So we don't lose those two positions, and that's, um, really support, you have both buildings for uh, front counters, Spanish and that kinda work, so, um, those two are in place for now, and I have a request in for another hundred sixty-six thousand to add to that to get us through the next, that would get us through twenty twenty-seven on that, on that grant.
DOH.
That's through DOH, yeah, that's on the CONCON, it's not part of FPHS, it's a, it's a different grant. Um, we're going to legislature to see if they can fix the funding problem with FPHS. So I think, I'm not sure if I talked about it here before, but we were getting some of our funding with the vaping fund. And legislature redefined what was vaping, what was tobacco, and, and we lost about a quarter of the funding in that account. So, um, I'm in, in charge of trying to figure out how to make the cuts across the state, so we have to cut four million between June, or January first and June thirty. And then we may have to cut another sixteen million, actually it's twenty million, but if we cut four million this year, then it, it, it counts against the sixteen million that we would have to, to cut next year, and to spread those cuts across the state. So at the last go-around, we really kinda took a big hit when the, the cuts came, and, um, we took a nineteen point I think nineteen point eight percent cut, where a lot of jurisdictions got a two-point-three percent cut, so I'm wanting to keep that a little more equitable going around this, this next time, um, to see if we, we can even out. Some of the counties took a twenty-seven percent, um, decrease, and they were the smallest counties. So, uh, we're trying to defend what we do here in the rural, uh, end of the world, and
Good luck.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough legislative session, and, uh, in talking with the our legislators, I said, you know, don't bring policy to us, so we are act, we're bringing forward no policy requests. Um, we're only gonna be worried about, about budgets, so this is not the year to do policy. So, and, and that's kinda where I'm at, working with, with that. Uh, we do have the opioid, uh, workshop next week on the tenth. Uh, we'll get the times out, and since, since everybody's kind of the, um, how much is in the account, how much we expect? And I've, I've got the running totals on that, so, uh, right now, if, if we grant everything that's being asked for, we would expire the fund in three point four years.
What time is the meeting on the tenth?
Uh, Kami, I haven't set the time yet.
Do you guys have a preference with that workshop plus comp plan workshop? Afternoon or?
So why, why the tenth and not the eighth or ninth?
Veterans is still.
Eleven, yeah.
Wait, oh, I'm in December. Let's get out of December, holy cow.
We avoid Saturday, Sunday meetings.
Oh, but why?
I haven't figured out how to avoid it.
So we have the Board of Health, right? Or is that canceled?
No, so we've got, we've got, on the twelfth, we have the solid waste special meeting, and then on the twenty-fifth, we've got the regular Board of Health meeting.
So the twelfth is, what do you mean?
The solid waste?
It's a policy, it's actually a.
Are we all part of that or just her because she's solid waste, uh?
No, that's why.
I don't have it in my calendar.
Yeah, I don't either.
Alright, we'll get that out. Okay, so we'll get the agendas and things for that out today, so.
And that's for the tenth.
Yeah, as for the tenth, could we, I mean, we could go straight from a briefing, well, take a, a little bit of a break, cause we like breaks. Need them every now and then, but maybe we could squeeze something in on the tenth, for sure.
And, and I will send out the, the documents to show how much money we, we have received and how much we expect to receive in the next fourteen years.
So what is the other we already have that we're gonna squeeze in on the tenth?
That's the, um, comp plan.
We have comp plan.
Yeah.
On the tenth.
Be a long day.
Well, you know, we used to do full days. For briefings, so.
Yep.
There are times when we're gonna have to do that.
Those are my only two on the schedule so far.
Okay. Okay.
That will change in a few.
Probably.
I'm hoping to do an, uh, a lunch break and then coming back and doing both.
Like, say one o'clock?
Yeah. Yeah, do one o'clock, and then. Yeah, one to two for opioid and then two to I'd say maybe a fifteen-minute break between the opioid and the comp plan.
Okay.
Does that sound good for you?
And on opioid, I'll invite, uh, Tim Whitehead as well, since he's, he's kind of a representative to the regional council.
You're gonna need more time than an hour.
I think we can do it an hour, because I, what I really need.
We hope you can do it.
Guidelines.
But what I, I'm just asking from the board is, is give me some direction on how do you wanna do, you wanna do big projects, do you wanna do a lot of small projects, and let's just talk about how long it takes to spend out the fund.
Yep, sounds enjoyable.
Tis the season, November, December, it's money, money.
Yeah, and we have, it's not like we have a choice, how to get it done.
Right. Yeah, so we haven't spent any, so we haven't had to do any reporting, so as soon as we start spending, then we have, there's the whole reporting thing that happens and we'll get that spun up. That's actually fairly easy.
A few requests too, so.
Yeah, we've had three for sure. So, uh, North Mason, Sheriff's Office and Coroner.
What was the coroner's one again?
For the Randolph machine.
How much was that, do you remember?
I think we were looking at thirty thousand a year.
Per year.
And that, that would cover test kits, licensing and, um, programming updates.
I believe that that would help her get, um, what's it called, the jail is, and the sheriff's office are.
Accredited.
Accredited.
Accredited, thank you, yes, thank you. Okay.
Okay. Okay.
That was your, uh, all hands meeting.
Oh, the all staff went really well, we started off with a, um, we broke into teams to do an exercise on, um, foodborne illness. Like a mystery, and you use nurses and environmental health folks all working together in different groups to, to solve the you know, what made everybody sick.
It's like a murder mystery?
It's kinda like.
It was called The Curse of the Contaminated Cauldron.
Yeah. And, and we had, we had a lot of good training, um.
And it was also waterborne illness, cause the EH.
Right, we had two illnesses, so we threw up a loop there, um.
I thought you said waterborne.
Yeah, that was the afternoon session.
Yeah. Uh-huh, and we did, uh, we did a lot of training around the budget, you know, got into, really into the weeds on the budget and on contracts and the contracts I'd just received the night before, went through them line by line, and how it affects each person's, uh, position, so, uh, I this is such a time of uncertainty, I wanna make sure that every head, they should know everything that I know, uh, cause there otherwise people, you know, make up the, the.
Jump to conclusions.
Yeah, jump to conclusions, so.
No, that don't happen at all. Everybody should be insulting you and fuck.
Yeah, so, and, and going forward, um, I'm meeting at least twice a week with, with LaSafa and WAC staff on the cuts.
Okay.
I will keep informed as to how that's going. I'm, right now, I'm not the most popular guy in the state, I'm the guy that's, that's gonna be telling who gives what. Yeah. So, um, for us, I think we could wind up with a twenty thousand dollar cut, we could wind up with a hundred and twenty thousand dollar cut, depending how things look. On the first go-around, sixteen million, that's gonna be a whole new thing, and then we have to decide is it gonna be all borne by local public health jurisdictions, or is DOH gonna have to pony up, how about the tribes, how about the state board of health? Um, it gets a lot more complicated.
Okay, okay, anything else?
Yeah, do it.
Good.
Thank you for the work you guys are doing on that, uh, that septic out there.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yep, yep.
Alright.
Now, Ian, I, I do have another string of texts to share with you.
Alright. Travis, all you.
Sir.
What's that?
No, it's all you.
It's all you.
Oh, okay, well then.
But, but how are you?
John, you are up first.
That's all you're gonna get, so.
Thank you.
Uh, I will let our new staff member introduce herself, so she can get back and start looking at all the things she's gonna be taking on.
Uh, I'm Tanya Kenner, and I am the incoming training and exercise coordinator for DEM, so today is day one for me.
And he throws you in here.
Oh, this is perfect, I love drinking from the fire hose, so this is really good. Um, I'm born and raised in Mason County and have been very heavily involved with search and rescue for the last six years, and so um, just am really excited to come in and, uh, get oriented and get a little bit of the lay of the land and see what I can do to.
What part are you from?
Um, a little bit of all over, but union, yeah, multi-generational, union family, so.
Wonderful place.
Yeah, I like it, I like it, it's a good, nice place to be from, so, um, yeah, I'm just really excited to see what I can do to help with um, Mason County emergency preparedness and develop some multi-agency relationships and.
We're excited to have you on board.
Thank you.
Yes, I've heard nothing but great things.
Same to you.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thanks. Anything else you would like to share?
No, not unless you want to.
That's, that's, hey, I, I've, I've been at this job, what time is it? Uh, a few hours. I recognize you, nice to see you. You too, I didn't even, uh, realize that was you sitting there, so. Good to see you. You too.
So I have two things, one's more parks, one from emergency management, which is an update to parks. We have before you is a request to raise the rental rates, which is based on the CPI for urban areas. So we have that resolution as well as the documentation to support it.
I'm supportive.
Yeah, looks good. Three nods.
Second thing, just an update, um, I had briefed that we had been approved for our new server for emergency management, which was a grant. Uh, they're now deciding who's gonna purchase it, so we're at the closing stages of it, and we were able to save money on the actual purchase itself, so that will be hopefully up and running within the next couple of months, and then we can look at how we can expand our training and exercise and get emergency workers onto our platform and still keep them separate from the county's platform, but still give them an opportunity to do the training that they need to reach the documentations that we have and be able to communicate with them, uh, fluidly, which is one of the challenges we have now. So I just thought I'd update with that, and that's all I have.
Okay, any questions?
Oh, this is kind of so many, somewhat off-topic, uh, we have a gentleman out in the scope that you've communicated with, you've worked out all the details with, um, that constituent. Got him squared away.
About that flood.
Or do we?
No, I, I think, I think we are, uh, and I've talked to the administrator, we're gonna get a publication out to everybody explaining why. Uh, there are a lot of challenges, and I am not saying anything about my predecessors, but uh, scope is one of those challenges, because geographically, it may flood in one area this year the same situation and levels next year floods somewhere else. So it, it's difficult to do that, especially with this, uh, alert and warning pieces.
Is there something we need to bring up with MaceCom, get them?
Uh, my challenge is, is there was an agreement that was made, that we would watch the gauges, which I do not have staff for, and that when it reached fifteen feet, we would send out a warning through code red. But not everybody in the scope ballot valleys on code red, and it doesn't reach the level of IPoS. So if I send it out over IPoS, we would lose our ability to use IPoS. So my challenge is, I wanna make sure everybody's notified, but last year, we had a, a uh, older lady and her, her daughter needing to be rescued from flooding out there, they didn't know about code red. Uh, they weren't part of that alert system, and so that's my challenge, is that there are people out there that don't know about that system. And we're doing the best we can to publicize it, but I don't wanna give alert and warnings over code red and not going out to everybody, but I can't elevate it to an IPoS, because it's not life safety at that point.
So we need to probably extend a little bit of money or time or something, uh, for a new educational class out there to get them signed up, uh. With the Grange being what they are right now there.
Yeah, we also spoke about or talked about, um, sending out letters to each household with the address for the, for the.
And we're looking at ways to address that, I'm just being able to, and we'll register people if they get ahold of us. The challenge is, is that when we send it over code red, we've gotten people who said thank you and other people that came back and said, we don't want these messages unless it's life safety. So it's trying to balance those pieces, and I don't want people to drop off code red or the alert system. Uh, so we're trying to find a way to. Uh, so we're trying to find a way to to meet everybody's needs, but it's it's a.
Because of the age of the people that are out there, and they are gonna be a little challenged at times, it'd probably be wise to do the letter, but also have a hands-on thing, it may be. If the if the Grange is not able to open, to allow for it, to have it maybe at that church that's just down the road from it, but at least you can get hands-on interactions and sign them up right there, just get them signed up.
And I I think that's the next way we'll go, and I'll I'll talk. To try, cause we'll go out there and sit down and and have people come in and register them, whatever way to get them on there. I just wanna make sure before we sending, sending alerts out, that we've got as many people on there as we can, and to be honest, I do not have the staff to sit and watch. River gauges at fifteen feet when sixteen point five is minimum flooding and eighteen to twenty feet is severe flooding, but it doesn't flood in the same areas all the time, so.
Well, they can put together their own block watch, that can help you to do that as well.
Well, and we've sent it out, because all the gauges are online, I mean, you can pull them up and and be able to to watch them yourself, and I realize there are people out there that may not have the technology to do that. Uh, but we'll try to address that on a, on an individual basis.
Yeah, we did have Chris looking up, and there is a state website that he, that will actually send you alerts directly, you can sign up for it, so they can get alerts at whatever level that they want to. Chris is currently testing it right now to make sure that it works before we put something together to put out to the public, we don't wanna make a, you know, we don't wanna send out bad information, so he's in the process right now, testing it to make sure that those alerts come out the, the way that they want to, and then I. Do think to Mr. Nellin's point, that's a, is a good point, there are lots of people out there who, not lots of people, but there are some people out there who may not have the technology or inclination to do it that way, but certainly a block watch program for those people who want to get those notifications from the state and then notify neighbors and and kinda. Do it a little more grassroots, rather than simply relying upon the county.
And we do have a cert program out there, but it's not very robust, and this might be one of the ways to increase that program, because it's a call, you know, there's a benefit to it, the more members that we have, so. We will look at that, I think we're working towards a solution the best we can, and I know he wasn't happy with the solution that he had, but at this point, that's the. We're looking at better ways to do it, but that's the best we can do it right now.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'm next.
You're next.
I think so.
Perfect.
Then you're next.
Oh, I'm waiting for this one.
Are you maybe waiting?
Well, I'm waiting for the reaction for this one.
This, this is, you know, not something I'm used to doing, but uh, uh, what we have is a a subrecipient agreement with Media Action Council for the Public Services Community Development Block Grant that we have. Uh, it's for a hundred and four thousand, but the grant's for a hundred and five thousand, we gave a hundred, a thousand dollars for administering the grant. So that's for my work on the, that I've done on the grant, including the briefing today, and so, um, pretty straightforward, same as it has been since twenty twenty-two. And I'd like to put that on action agenda November twenty-fifth, for the chair to sign.
I I wish that we had other people that could perform this duty, or another group, but I know we don't, and it is a requirement for the CDBG grant. So. My relationship with them has not been the best. But. I'll support it.
And you got mine.
Oh, oh, go on that.
There's a history here.
For the twenty-fifth, so.
Yeah, there's a history here.
You know, maybe you can have your questions answered.
Nope.
Okay. On the twenty-fifth, thank you.
Doesn't sound like we have a choice. Yeah, they take the win. There's a long, there's a long history there.
Yes, I understand, definitely, I can be the messenger on this one.
Appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
They wouldn't accept my phone call anyway.
Thank you, that's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Relatively painless, you did great.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Did they give that one to you on purpose, I'm just curious, everybody else knows the background there.
No, 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 it was part of um just stepping into managing this grant, as the grant manager for, to do the briefing on and take over on all of it, so I really, I didn't. No.
No.
I gave her some background this morning.
A little bit, yes, yes, I'm glad you didn't tell me on Friday. Hey, do you want me to say or go?
Whatever you wanna do.
I I wouldn't mind saying per few.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Alright, so I am next, I believe, unless you.
I believe so.
Okay. Um, so I will share my screen. And I do have a slight change from what was turned in to you last Wednesday, um, I made an error on the sheriff's office salaries and benefits and didn't include the thirty-eight thousand. Um, in there, so I I put that in there, um, that was the overtime and holiday time that um was approved when we went through the PLRs, um.
It's this budget docs and department, departments and offices.
No, it's under uh twenty twenty-six uh budget, and then in your folder, it's um, it's called uh twenty twenty-six um proposed budget. At eleven, three, twenty-five, I believe, twenty twenty-five, I believe. Twenty twenty-six. And then, could be under yours. Yeah, you each have an individual folder in there. Um, so just a disclaimer that there is a thirty-eight thousand dollar change since what was turned in. Um, I did go in and update the salaries and benefits to include the medical change that uh Kim had briefed last week. So that is now included in the salaries and benefits, and um I did also find an error that I had made um in the sheriff's salaries and benefits. Uh, besides the thirty-eight thousand, I had included an FTE, so their their salaries and benefits actually um went down about uh twenty-one thousand, I believe, overall. Since the October twenty-seventh briefing, but um. With that, um, our general fund revenue at this point in time, um, still estimating the twenty-four million dollar beginning fund balance for twenty twenty-six. And I'll analyze that again now that October is over. We're looking at forty-six million, six hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-six in revenues for next year, anticipated revenues. Um, and of course, that will change uh once I get uh the property taxes more, more finalized uh with with the assessor's office, I'll work with um Sierra and R. Selli on that. Um, the salaries and benefits right now were estimating thirty-eight million, two hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred twenty-two dollars, that is a seven hundred. Two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollar increase over twenty twenty-five's adopted budget. And the operating expenditures are estimated at nineteen million, ninety-three thousand, four hundred and nineteen thousand at this time, and that's only a fifty-six thousand, ninety-eight dollar increase over last year's budget. So um total expenditures, we're looking at fifty-seven million, three hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. And an estimated ending fund balance right now of thirteen million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, if you look at last year's budget, we had anticipated fourteen million, two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars, and you know, looking at what we're anticipating the ending fund balance to be about twenty-four million, um. You know, that indicates that this, this number is going to be much higher than the thirteen million, two eighty-six, three fifteen, um, since we budget conservatively. Um, I did go through and uh reconciled the, the full-time equivalent employees, and that, that's included in your packet as well, um, and in your folders. Um, the Excel version is in your folders, uh, so I'll jump to that. Oh, I started putting in, um, I'm trying to reconcile the position control, so don't mind Megan's numbers in there. So for the general fund, at this point in time, we have two hundred and eighty-eight point five four um FTEs approved. Um, there's a change of a negative one point five eight, and that um includes um. We had facilities and grounds, a temporary um point four two seasonal maintenance that I added into the count. Um, we lost the ARPA position, and then community development um lost the temporary scanner position, one of them, um, a while back, so. So the, these are um temporary positions that were added or removed before the budget process. Um, we have in here the juvenile court services, the net zero um change, which was um converting the one uh. FTE, or the two part-time positions, we made that a one FTE dur- during the year, and um. And then they have that temporary uh position to cover for someone out on FMLA that currently has not been approved, so um. So I have that as a removal in the budget at this point in time. So um, so that is the. Two eighty-eight point five four, if you have questions on that, let me know, um, to go into Excel, you can, you can hover over the, the cell, and it shows the um, the notes that I have on there, in there on when. When the approval was made or the change was made. For the uh special funds, the employees, um. We have a total of. One hundred thirty-five point nine two, um. We had a, a removal of one point five in equipment rental revolving fund, uh, one of the employees was the um. Central shop assistant that was removed through attrition, that employee retired and that position was not filled, and then they had um a halftime. Uh, shop assistant that hadn't been filled for like twenty years or something that we just carried on, I don't know if it hadn't been that long, but it was a really long time that it was unfilled, so it finally got removed from the count. Um, we had a total of three employees that I found that were added in health, and one of them was an error correction, I had not counted them in the twenty twenty-five adopted budget. And I should have, and then um it looked like we added another two through grants, um, one of those we just approved in the twenty twenty-six budget process, that was the Puget Sound Grant, or what, I forget the name of the grant, but. A hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar grant total, part, part of it was a vehicle, and the other part was an, was an FTE. Um, so health has a total of thirty-three FTEs, um, so they. That was surprising to me, I wasn't expecting um the total of three additional FTEs there, but um at this point, we have four hundred twenty-four point four six. FTEs, where last year in the adopted budget, we had four twenty-four point five four, so just a slight decrease in overall in FTEs, so any questions on the FTEs, let me know. Can take a look, we can bring this back again. Okay, I'm gonna stop my sharing, go back to the budget.
I do have one question, can you go back to? Twenty twenty and take a look at health and see what the numbers were? Like, could I know that during that time, there are grants from? The federal government and from, I think, the state? To assist during COVID, so I'm not sure whether those numbers, you know, did those grants go away, did they? How, how, I'm just curious to, to know how, how that changed from the COVID years to now.
So if you go back to the twenty twenty adopted budget, there were eighteen point six uh FTEs, so yeah, they've had uh quite the, the increase, and almost double since then, so yeah. And if you go and look at the um, at the additions, um, there's notes in, in all of those fields on the.
Okay.
The increases in, in that fund, in, in every fund.
I know most of the positions are, are grant funded.
Yeah, I believe in health, they're all grant funded, um, but there's the portion from the general fund, um, they're grant funded, but there's grant match or, you know, administrative costs that aren't. Covered in some of those grants, and so that's what that um additional, you know, that transfer from the general fund covers. Um, I can get a breakdown from health on, on that, um, from past years, and then they, they anticipate moving forward what that's going to be, um.
Okay.
So I can get more detail on that.
Okay, appreciate that. It's hard, I don't wanna question the, the ones that are, you know, grant, I mean, I do, but I don't, but I understand more about the grant funded and then the fee funded positions. But the others, I, I'd just be curious. Thank you.
Okay, so um, any questions on the general fund before we move on to special funds? At this point, we'll go over the PLRs last, if you, if you choose to do that at this time. Sorry, I can't see part of my screen, because the um sharing part is in the way. Okay, so um, on the special funds for the twenty twenty-six maintenance level, I don't think we had any changes since, since last week, except for the um, the salaries and benefits, of course. So right now, for the special funds, we're looking at total revenue and beginning fund balances of a hundred and twenty-six million, eighty-six thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars. Um, total salaries and benefits, sixteen million, five hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars, and um. Operating expenditures, fifty-one million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars, ending fund balances at fifty-eight million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars, and um. And they still have, um, their PLRs outstanding for public works, so um are we briefing next Monday, the tenth? I know we have the eleventh as a holiday.
I believe we are.
Okay. So we're getting down to the wire.
My counters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, we are, for sure.
Okay, um, so we can go through their PLRs now, or, or wait till next week, however, however you wanna do that?
I, I would kinda wait, like, to wait until next week, cause what I'm doing is I'm going back to the twenty-four and twenty-five and getting the numbers there for the PLR request, just to compare. Whether we've increased, or how much they actually have for the twenty-five, and they're asking for additional money, and do they really need it, so. Uh, it's up to you guys then.
I'd like to wait until we decide on the overall plan of how we're going to do it, because the things that they're asked before are appreciated, but knowing the numbers as I do, knowing what it's actually gonna come out to, and uh. What it actually looks like, I don't think a lot of that is uh. Uh, a problem, but a lot of it's not needed either, we gotta just separate that out, I think that we need to move some of that money as we make cuts, if we're gonna make the cuts, I think we should be making. Uh, into the general fund, uh, under patrol for the sheriff's department, uh. Until we start to make those decisions, I don't know how we can decide on the requests.
Exactly.
So on the special funds, um. So most of public works, I think, are, are. So on the special funds, um so most of public works, I think, are are pro- like, some of them have been pre-approved, really, um I believe. So um. Just a.
Well, stuff that have been pre-approved would already be the power maintenance. If we pre-approved it, unless we're gonna take it away, that that comes at a later date if we decide to make cuts, I would think that pre-approved means.
Well, I think some of these were were are projects that have already been planned, right?
Yeah, so I mean, I look at them a little differently than the general fund, um so I just wanted to make that point that um some of these really probably should be in. In maintenance, um and I don't wanna wait too long to.
Yeah, what do you mean by pre-approved? Maybe that's the the question I'm supposed to ask.
Like, I mean, their equipment that they purchase for ER and R or for roads and.
That we already told them to purchase.
Um I don't know if they already got approval to purchase this, but um.
But if it's not approved, then it's a PLR.
Okay.
But if it is approved, cuz that was the term you used, that's different, which means we did an action.
Yeah, I mean, there wasn't an action, but I think they've already come and talked about it and um so.
Like the wash rag?
Uh yeah, um so, I mean. Uh we can definitely wait and talk about those things um later, uh until later, until next Monday. Um the budget has to be on the website on the seventeenth and any changes, you know, that are made between now and then. I just feel like we're we're kinda getting down to the wire and anything that I can move over into maintenance now will be less work and less uh prone to errors, you know?
I agree.
The the one um that I am worried about is Russell Wood, um they're asking for an additional thirty-five thousand from.
I think that's a, personally, I think that's a maintenance one, I don't know if there's any other option.
Okay.
Compliance regen- requirements, R and M and professional service contracts and capital needs thirty-five thousand.
Question is, can we expend some of that out of REIT? That would be the question I would have, or perhaps even O nine, of which we have the ability and authority to do that. We need to refocus some of our energies, anything we can refocus out of REIT, O nine and other means people, we don't have to have that thrown away a lot.
I wanna make sure that we're not overextending REIT also.
Yeah, I think we still got quite a bit going there, we don't have, that's my.
We do, but we got a lot of requests too.
Hopefully, a lot of them will be set known to, right? Uh building, if we, the sheriff's department thing, if they bring that request down to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that changes.
Oh, the auditors asking for money to to move the elections department over and so there's there's requests out there that I don't think that we've.
Yeah, and that might not happen.
Fully been vetted.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that might not happen, I kind of, those are different, those are bigger. Right now, I think it's just a policy decision, but I think REIT funds and O nine both have to be reconciled for keeping what we can to keep employees and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that is all that I have for you today, unless you wanna go through anything else.
Well, I'm getting shakes, not nods, so I guess we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for us?
The only other thing I would wanna bring up is I should have brought it up last week, but uh every once in a while, we get some good news, I don't know if you saw, but uh. Maggie over at OPD did get a pretty nice grant that came in that she got approved for here a couple of weeks ago now for. Uh about hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars for just general improvements to OPD and it's got pretty broad uses. And so she she managed to secure those funds and and uh so yeah, I was pretty pretty excited to see that and she's over there still getting after it, which is awesome.
Definitely an asset.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll wanna put that on the November twenty-fifth action agenda, right?
You'll wanna get ahold of her and find out how she wants to. But probably.
She did need ahold of me and ask me, so so that's what I.
Well, then, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I thought she was gonna be briefing that, so I thought, oh, you must be briefing it for her, but.
No, I was simply bringing it up as it was awesome work that I saw come across my desk and wanna make sure that everybody was aware.
Well, and now we've been briefed, and so now it'll be on the schedule.
There you go.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
Before you go, so I would hope that the next time we start to do this, uh because we're running out of time, that we'll go through for all the PL. The PLRs and go through the ones that are maintenance, at least get those off our plates, we understand, and then we have to start talking about. If we see that there's a risk for the future.
And there's definitely a risk.
I agree, uh but with that, uh my belief is the stuff we move to maintenance, the stuff that's we're gonna have to do, we're not, even our cuts, we're not gonna be able to cut the. The stuff, this is the stuff with contracts that have to be extended uh and the like, it it those aren't, won't be our savings. Cuz eighty-some odd percent of it is all personnel. Uh but I'd like to get that out off of the table soon and then we could know what we're looking at.
That's why I'm doing the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Well, that's why, and that's why I'm asking if you'd be okay, maybe the next time we do it, that that's the one.
Oh, I think we we have to.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you then.
I got something for you, Travis, uh it's it's kind of a. So. Our staff in the jails and stuff like that, the risk level has been going up because I understand that we're being forced. We bought those scanners and stuff like that, we're being forced to to tone those down, uh to not be able to use them uh at the level that they were meant to. And with that, I do know that uh there's been a few times where, we know it comes out all the time anyway, but. But a few times where fentanyl has made it through and our staff ends up getting their hands on it and that scares the hell out of me cuz eventually one seal will open or whatever. And I don't even know what I'm asking you, but I I just wanna say, I know that that's a reality we're dealing with right now. Uh and there may be costs with that, but one like, cuz I really think it's so stupid, one thing can open and that could be the end of it. Uh please look at us and bring us some options on what to do or maybe it's even the fight to be able to turn that thing back on to a higher rate or something, I don't know. But right now, we're leaving them in a poor situation that has me a little bit worried.
Yeah, for sure, I mean, that's obviously, it was a decision that came down from the state level.
Yes.
We didn't really have any control over, um I'm not sure to what extent that it has value to them at this point. I will say, however, that it was probably prescient on the side of the sheriff's office to look at the um the K nine for the jail. So that it can be trained specifically for contraband in jail, and I know that that is one of the, one of the items that they were training for. Uh whether or not they've uh finished that training and they're able to deploy it for that purpose or not yet, I'm not sure. However, um we will have two two K nines in the county that will be available to do those sort of searches, keep the jail safe. But as far as the um the scanner, I think that would have to be something at the legislative level that would be addressed.
And that's just one part, though, and if we have to fight that, maybe we'll look at that, that is an option. Uh and this is not gonna be, we're not gonna probably like what I'm gonna say, but small cost today, large savings tomorrow. Two K nine specifically to work the system over and over, you know, uh be there when they're come, whenever people are coming in. Just throwing it out there, I I don't even like them saying it, but I don't know other options, if I could think of other options, I I would.
Maybe we talk to the jail for sure, let's add that to Dev's um list for the legislative priorities.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be prudent to talk to the jail chief and find out, you know, to what extent it's impacting your operations. And how how much it has decreased safety or if they've pivoted to something else that works, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain on that. But yeah, I can definitely reach out to Shane and and find out what the status of that is and if they've pivoted to something else that works or, you know, what what schedule the K nine is working and whether or not. Cuz they're, they may be working some schedule where um when somebody is being brought in for booking, they're putting it to a holding cell and they can do a search after that in order to. You know, ameliorate a safety concern, but yeah, I'll definitely reach out to him and find out what the what the actual status of that is at this point.
And how would you go?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Uh let's see, oh, I got a notice from TJ about Cyber Security Awareness Month. And I don't know if you guys did the training or not, but I completed all of them and I'm really glad that he sent out the last two episodes. And so just wanted to thank him, I was I was part of that fifty percent, so. It was kind of, it was interesting, it was really a good training.
Have they done another one recently? They did one a while back, I did that one.
It was a full month worth.
A long time ago?
No.
Oh?
No, last month.
Oh, then I don't have.
All of October, it was coming out in the email.
I don't have a hard time accessing, I did the wildfire one, but I got this other one that they just won't let me in no matter what.
Yes.
But they have, I only have one.
You may have to use Google Chrome, mine locked me out several times.
Is that what it is? Try to go on, okay.
Use Google Chrome.
Okay, no, I've I've had to do that now with my emails, so that might be what it is, it just doesn't like me, I can't. It sends me back and sometimes tells me I don't exist, sometimes it tells me that my account's pending.
With the new update, you do need to use the app and not the not the web link.
Yep.
It's for email, and TJ can set you up with that, actually, Chris can when he's back, he did it for me, I.
We'll do that.
Won't pretend I did it.
All right, um this afternoon, if you're available, also Travis, go over to D C D cuz they're gonna talk, they're gonna. Their records retention person contacted me and said, hey, if you guys wanna know what we did, come on over, and I took her up on that, so. We'll go over and see how we can maybe help Charles out with his records retentions. It's pretty cool. And then we'll also get ahold of the out the state archives and work with that too.
I'm heading out to Sat's Up Business Park for an E D D. So I forgot what the title is, I'd have to look that up, but it's uh the four counties getting together with, and Louis will be part of this.
Cool.
I have my glasses, can't see anything. I don't even know what day we're on, the third.
And then also Wasack sent out their L S D nomination or do, you know, who do you want on there, I would love to do it one more year. If that's okay.
Is there an action that you need us to do to make that happen or?
Just fill out the form and. Cool?
Yeah.
That?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
One more year.
Just so long as you don't add it onto my plate.
Four hundred and twenty-three days, not that I'm counting. Okay, and the other commissioners?
Uh Jared, move we, I charge it.
Oh, check on the hearing tomorrow, sorry, see if we need that hearing tomorrow.
Let's let's call him again right now, uh I never signed, he wasn't here when we talked. I never signed that document, he wanted to change it, he wanted us to promise to give it to him. I couldn't sign that because I can't promise to give, that's what the meeting is for, so I don't know. I never saw anything that said that they continue, didn't continue.
For tomorrow, we have a special meet hearing on lots three and four. And so Commissioner Nellin is concerned.
Cuz it could have died, the deal could have died without signing it, but he was supposed to.
Cuz he wanted an extension, right?
Yeah, he could have got them just to agree on it.
Yeah, I know which property it is, I'm just not sure what the, maybe I'm behind on her on this one.
Well, he may not go forward except what he sent me, I just was, oh damn it, that's why I didn't get to the last.
Go wifi, take off wifi.
All right, I had second.
No, no, we're still, we're still going.
Not adjourned yet.
That didn't work for me. I'll go and try the old one then again.
Yeah. I'm not gonna make that Wasack virtual assembly.
Nah, this one's kind of.
Yeah, so regional port for for um Grace Harbor, Mason, Pacific, there's some counties, it's uh.
That's an important one.
Put on by the E D D.
Yeah.
But I gotta be down at Sat's Up at one. So we have a little time, not much.
Hey, Richard, it's Randy, uh needed a little bit of information real quick. When they sent down the properties up there in public works, they sent that uh request for us to sign something I couldn't sign when it came to promising them the property. What was the outcome of that? Are they still in? Is everything still fine? Because we have a a hearing set up for tomorrow.
Yeah, they um they s- they signed the a blank extension.
Okay, they signed the blank extension, okay, that's all, that's all we need, so we're still good.
And then they sent a memo of whether it's meeting or something as well, they sent all that too.
Yeah, and we're, we couldn't sign that.
So there's an agenda.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, but the other extension is still good, we're we're set. Okay, we'll have the hearing tomorrow then.
All right.
Nope, thank you. So yeah, so, cuz we never signed, but they they had signed the original one, they must have come in afterwards, they wanted this. But again, what they asked for was just not something any of us could do.
That's the one that I called you on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, I'm now, I know, we're right.
Cool, all right.
I gotta hear it move with you, Richard.
Second.
I'm gonna be off this turn now.